This is Brad Simis and I'd like to call to order the December 20th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation to the Elder and Social Services organization.
So we have Maggie Anderson with here, our Director of Elder and Social Services for the board. Just want to let you know you do have one additional sheet revised, control sheet that includes updated value of donations that were just received over the last two days from the ESS department, so.
So it looks like there is a total of gift cards in the amount of $2,055.70 and clothing items in, or I'm sorry, and a Unibank gift card in the amount of $475, is that right?
Yes. Unibank gave gift cards as well as clothing items and toiletries near the Giving Tree in the lobby.
Okay, that's nice, good. All right, wonderful. Any questions?
What was that, a faded number?
It's right, it's right there. $2,557. Right here. So, you know, one of the things is that according to the board's policies as well as Mass General Law, donations and gifts need to be accepted by the board selectmen. The Elder and Social Services Department does receive a number of donations throughout the year. This is a nice influx that had recently come in. Some people that wanted to remain anonymous, i.e. they didn't give Maggie their name. Others such as Unibank, you know, who have done a lot of stuff for the town over the the year, you know, continue to come in and bring in well over $500 worth of materials, you know, gift cards and other pieces of clothing for various need in the town. So this is a way to sort of bring attention even to those anonymous people, even if we're not saying thank you to their name, at least acknowledging that in our meeting, we can extend our thank you as well.
I just want to add, also generous donations from the St. Gabriel's Giving Tree as well as the Bloomers, the gift cards and donations this Thanksgiving as well as during Christmas time. A lot of giving generous organizations and, and measures of gratitude from all.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Any questions or comments, or otherwise I will accept a motion if I.
I'm ready.
You ready?
I'm ready.
I move that the board of selectmen vote through into Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept donations to the Department of Elder and Social Services, also known as ESS. Various gift cards from anonymous residents in the amount of $2,055.70. Various gift cards from Unibank in the amount of $475 and various items of clothing from Unibank.
With second motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Next on the agenda, we have the acceptance of the Mass Office of Disability Grant as well as the execution of the contract.
So for the board, included in the board's packet is an email from Evan George with great news that the Town of Upton has been awarded $97,500 in FY '23 Municipal ADA Improvement Program. This is something that we wrote towards the end of the summer to improve ADA access and compliance at the police station, fire station, TPW, office trailer, as well as town. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. She did vote to support submission of the grant, so hopefully you'll accept it as well.
Great. Questions?
My only question would be, do you think that amount that we are being awarded, is that enough to solve the problems that we have?
I have essentially like a 30% contingency in there, I sure hope. So if there is anything, then we do have a facilities budget that we could supplement. You know, and this will be something after the beginning of the year, pulling together the the specs for the various buildings and we'll have a better idea. But it was based on estimates that were done as part of an assessment as well as sort of just spot checking some figures such as the ADA ramp for trailers, you know, lining that up with the trailer that is factored in in production for the Restine Building. So, you know, a way of at least double checking to make sure that things are reasonable. Again, we're in an environment where no one knows what it could end up, but I don't think it's going to be something that even if we get to make something up, I think we have enough in our budget to accommodate that.
Excellent.
Wonderful. Are you good? Wonderful. Apply to the application or apply for the grant?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Great work.
Very good.
This, I think, you know, partly is on the heels of the assessment that we had done, right?
It's all built on the shoulders of others, so that assessment really is what doing the assessments, finding out our some of the issues is really important. Without that, you can't apply for grants, you can't apply for funding even here.
Yeah, it's great. I just want to make sure, right, because there's a connection between all those sort of activities. And sometimes people wonder, you know, same thing with the master plan or different types of plans that the town puts together often.
Yes.
So sorry that we took advantage of that process, so thank you. Will entertain motions?
All right. I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the award of the FY 2023 Municipal ADA Improvement Grant in the amount of $97,500 and authorize the town manager to sign associated documents.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Next on the agenda is the town manager.
So, as always, there's a lot going on. I believe you mentioned to the board last time Dennis was on that we're finalizing contract language for the bridge for January as well as the water tank and generator. The tip project, now that we're in winter, there's still or maybe even board members are approached, there are still some things that need to be done. Telephone poles in the middle of sidewalks, sidewalks that haven't been completed. Basically, things aren't pulled over the winter and Dennis will be working with the contractor as well as sustain once weather warms up and spring to finalize that. Tied to that, it's been defined that coming up on January 26th, that's going to be the public hearing for the 25% design plans. I did get those. So we're in the process of putting together a webpage to put those plans so people can start looking at those and, you know, prepare for that public hearing, gives us some delegates, start to do some outreach in advance of that. Building activity continues with Pulte up by the Northridge Town Line and also at Collyman's Creek. They did identify that and I'm just flinging on the project. Upton Ridge, that there's four remaining units that are up there and then that project's going to be closing out, so that's coming along history for that project coming to an end. With those five units, Collyman's Creek is also under construction, but they are noticing that compared to the initial pace, things are slowing down a little bit with the change in interest rates as well as just supply issues. So we're going to continue to monitor that because that does have an impact as far as revenue that's coming into the town through the building department as well as through assessors. So far, we've been, we've been lucky to not really have any demand for getting our crews out to do snow clearing or any activities. So let's, in some ways, cross our fingers that that stays that way. But they are prepared, they are, they are ready and all the contracts have been lined up with contractors to be available should we need it. Just let the board know that everything is all set for the tax bills to go out the end of the month. This is something that is really well deserved for recognizing how the Treasury, like this office as well as the assessors. We have new staff in both departments and to be able to not only do some of the work to catch up and really get into the operations of the department, but then to really pull together and work together in order to get tax bills and everything pulled together. Really want to thank them for their, their effort. They're doing an awesome job downstairs. The Rec Department, you may have seen on Facebook or social media, they do have the light up Upton. So everyone visit town's website or Facebook, go over to Recreation, see a map of some of the highlighted homes for holiday decorations. Believe it or not, even though we're just halfway through our FY '23 and just got completed with our elections, we're already preparing for FY '24 as well as the March 2024 primary, you know, presidential primary. So those are things that now, you know, it's, it's tough when you're looking a year and a half out, but that all falls within the FY '24 budget. So town clerk is really trying to take a look what's going to be needed and with some of the requirements that came out with recent voting laws and requirements for for mail by vote, and it does have an impact as far as how we do operations. So she has an eye out towards that. You know, and mail by vote is not insignificant, you know, it's free for just this recent election. It's $2,000 and just in postage. Never mind additional hours for, for people to work. As everyone may know, the tax rate was just set. It is $2 lower as we had heard during our technical classification hearing. One of the reasons for, or the reason for that is that value significantly increased. So even though the rate was $2 less, it doesn't mean that people are going to see a reduction. It's pretty much either the same or a little bit more. The assessing department did note that some sales have started to slow down over the last year. Things, they not been, were pretty caught with things not being on market too long, but with some of the recent changes with interest rates, we have started to see things slow down a little bit. Code Department is starting to work on evaluating its permit fees. This was last done, I'm told about three to four years ago, so it is sort of a best practice just to check, see if any adjustments need made. If they are to be made, then they'll be in front of us for presenting why there should be any changes for the board to approve. Library is seeing an unanticipated increase in demand in November. And so while it caught them somewhat by surprise, mainly because, you know, we, we have the existing, it's somewhat smaller and the circulation is limited. But they did. It's one of those things that's like, well, we can now see once we move to the, to the new facility of the new community center, that this is just going to continue to increase, especially as people are starting to sign up for programs. The library is holding a lot of their reading programs and craft programs here in Town Hall. They are seeing an uptick in usage and attendance at those programs now as well, so. I guess every other Thursday is there's a dungeon of dragons. That comes in need in the lower level, so it's great to have people of all ages using Town Hall. One of the focuses that we also are continuing on is police. I recently informed the board that we had appointed two police officers. You're about to get email on a third and a new dispatcher is off in the wings that we're extending and offer employment. We're going to be doing backgrounds and then I can forward that position up to you as well for appointment or for confirmation of appointment. You know, and with, with then some final filling of positions within Town Hall as well as going to be emailing the board about appointment of a new water superintendent. This last six months of, of real people on a staff level is coming to an end. We just don't want it to continue. But a lot of the, the staff, Sandy, all the department heads have worked very hard to fill these positions, do the networking that's been necessary to bring these people on. So really want to thank them for, for their assistance and Sandy's assistance. It's, it's been a lot of work for these last six months and sometimes people don't realize how much time it takes to actually fill positions and onboard and all of that. And we've had retirements and those people that are retiring have questions, they want to know what to do, what paperwork to file. So it does occupy a lot of Sandy's time. So I just wanted to, you know, let the board know about all that.
Definitely, you'd have to say it's unprecedented in the history of Upton to have this much turnover in such a short period of time. Maybe you were to really look at all the positions as you mentioned, even if you took public safety out of the equation, you look at just Town Hall. It's amazing how much turnover that. Yeah, so then when you factor in police officers, you know, some that have left, some that have retired.
Correct.
And then, of course, the water superintendent, there's another position then.
Exactly.
But so.
Sort of wrapping up a couple, couple things. I got an email from a local reporter. There is a new Upton Mendon newspaper that is starting up. It does not look like it's affiliated with the former Upton Town Prior. It looks like they're a little bit more affiliated with some other local newspapers that are outside of our, our region, so maybe trying to fill a void. I've reached out to try to get a better understanding as far as what, what they're intense as far as, is it a weekly, is it an online, you know, what are they, what are they covering? So I'll let the board know, but at least there's some potential that there's a way for some of the activities that are going on and enough to get some sort of feels like we're in a little bit of a black hole. No one knows anything about what's going on in Upton. We have a lot of good stuff that's going on. Lastly, one of the things that Board of Health is trying to deal with, you may have seen on the website as well as heard, Mass DEP has recently changed rules as in relation to disposal mattresses. They can no longer go in the waste stream now, they have to basically be recycled. It costs $100 if you're to call up Harvey in order to dispose of a mattress because it has to be done in certain ways. It just doesn't go to landfill anymore. So there is a that now residents are paying when dealing with mattresses, this is Fox Springs as well. So there's been a lot of calls that have been coming into the Board Health Office. Encourage people to view the Board Health website for, for information on this. And it is the result of a recent DEP ruling and the cost for then dealing and recycling these does get passed on to the people that are looking at. Sort of rounding things out as we're coming into the end of the year. I'm working with a lot of departments. One, this is my first budget season in Upton and trying to learn as much from some of the veteran departments on how they approach their, their budget, building that. One of the needs of the departments was to get a better understanding. And then we have a lot of new department heads who are, are also trying to figure out how to approach their budgets. So working with a lot of departments, trying to sort of both learn the process together. You know, we're a great team, we work, work well together and it's something that we're really starting to learn a lot of these things together at the same time.
Great. Questions?
Very good.
Just one quick question. Earlier in the agenda, we had accepted the Mass Office of Disability Grant and you had touched upon the ramp for the Restine Building. Where do we stand with that project right now?
So that is that is a point of frustration almost on a daily or weekly basis because we really are held hostage by the company that we signed a contract for the ramp. We had originally signed a contract back in July. They stated because of production issues with steel and all that, there was going to be about a three month delay. End of October, they basically had said, hey, we were moving forward. We anticipate end of the month, we should get it installed. Couple of weeks later, I'm told, hey, we don't have the ramp, the ramp can't because of steel can't be completed, so they wanted us to consider aluminum. They'll send us the specs on what the aluminum meant, so I can review with DPW, I can review with building, review with library, making sure that, okay, is this going to be suitable? Asked them to send revised contract. The last two weeks, been prompting them and they still have not sent that revised contract. So that I can then sign it to then have them make that change order because the contract that we have signed is for steel ring. It's getting to an extremely frustrating point because library has to continue to have programs over here. Does have a limit on their ability to do things in the library. Second of all, as we're running into then winter and then conditions are not exactly the most ideal for installing and attaching it to the, the library. And then the third is that if we're looking for a March, April timeframe, something that town had voted a year ago to appropriate the funds, taking this long is, you know, an extreme frustration for a lot of people. The only other options are basically then to go back out, try to find another company and then realistically we're then waiting past when the library is going to move out. So trying to maintain constant communication with this, with them telling me where they are. So the holidays, so this person is now out for the week and is coming back. They're the ones that have to revise the sign off on the revised contract. That's where I am right now. All right.
The only thing I wanted to point out or reinforce was the January 26th tip review. That's for the downtown project along 140 that's going to include the potential installation of the roundabout in the center of town. So I think that's something that people may be very interested in. So should mark their calendars accordingly. Now we have an opportunity for the public to provide any input on any topic of interest.
The Chair, Maggie Agnew. Not a topic of interest, but a topic that we're discussing, Mass Office of Disabilities Grant. I just want to really thank the town manager and the Chief of Police, the DPW Director, the Fire Department. Going after this, I think you all know, I advocated for the transition plan as well as the going after the Mass Office of Disabilities Grant and our brand new town manager, I kind of walked in in June and asked him, you know, started asking about it. I really, I think this is wonderful. We're moving, you know, forward with all of that, so I just want to say thank you and I think it's awesome. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Played a critical role in that process over the years and certainly recently. Any other comments or input? Okay, next up, we have our friends from the Grafton-Upton Railroad to talk about the sewer project. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Moskin, the President of Grafton-Upton Railroad. It's not a secret, the earth works.
Anything? I think, oh, first of all. First, I'd probably like to sort of start off by deferring to Dennis to sort of give an overview as far as where we are and then, and then Michael can sort of talk about then the cooperative arrangement that we have between the Town of Upton and the Grafton-Upton Railroad on trying to address this need to replace this very crucial sewer.
Mr. Westgate, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that we're here to talk about that 15 inch vitrified clay pipe interceptor that runs through the Grafton-Upton Railroad. This has been identified by the town as a problem child going back to 2010, 2012, when there were early discussions between the railroad and the town as to how to remedy this problem. In the latest and greatest assessments of the line in the last couple of years, we had Ty and Bond do an assessment of our infrastructure and including that line. We were able to camera that line and identify that there are there are serious issues with the line, there are serious intrusions and it is a major factor in our I and I issues. So working with the railroad over the last several years, we have been discussing possibilities of what we could do with that line to remedy this problem. What we have come up with, and you're going to hear from the railroad on their part of it, is the town is, is prepared a engineering proposal for your discussion tonight, which allows the, the town to go in and to assess all of the easements that are there, identify them, identify the line and then propose the best remedy to move the line and redo the piping. And the, the railroad is amenable to contributing to the construction and the materials aspect of that project. And the town is considering, for your perusal tonight, the, the cost associated with the actual engineering and the recordable documents that we will put as perpetual easements to maintain that line in perpetuity. So this is a 15 inch clay line. Vitrified clay means it is, it was devised many years ago of several different types of clay and shale heated to 2,000 degrees, so it became impervious to moisture and water issues. And today we do, we don't allow this, this is not part of our standards for today's technology. And so there are some aspects of this line that create some problems. First of all, it's 10 feet deep as we speak and the railroad is proposing to be able to fill over that and add some additional earth to it, so that in the end it will be more than 10 feet deep. It'll be anywhere between 14 and 16 feet deep. And our engineers are taking that into consideration along with a maintenance understanding of how we can access that line in perpetuity. We can fix that line if we need to. And so we have, for your perusal tonight, an agreement with Wright Pierce Engineering, an entirring agreement for them to do the engineering of the onsite identification, the as-bills, on the, the complete engineering of the line, construction oversight and the engineer, and the Grafton. And the engineer, and the Grafton Upton Railroad is prepared to discuss with the board tonight their proposal to provide all the materials and construction aspect of it at their cost. Mr. Chairman. And at that, at that point, I'm going to turn this over to Michael Melanowski, represents the Grafton Upton Railroad, to present their aspect of that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good things take a while unfortunately. And, you know, some of that's supply chain, some of that's consultants, some of that's just making sure we got the right people in the same room. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, we probably had this discussion about three years ago. When Dennis, when we were looking to do in this public-private partnership. And I think at that time, we were looking at potentially relining the pipe, going through with a, all their blast out the pipe and re-cement through the site. And that was our, I think our preferred choice initially. And this pipe has been a hundred years old. Let me say that it's clay and and it's falling apart. But when Dennis hired, and the town hired the consultants, the committee in Cameron, we found out that not only was there intrusions and cracks, the elevation had changed. So that just was no longer an engineering option. Again, just going back three plus years is this is something that we've been coordinating with Dennis, the former town administrator, Joe's picked this up, as I mentioned, you were on here before, is the railroad has been partnering with the town in many things, the public-private partnerships. We meet, you know, pretty much every two weeks, there's a police and fire chief and work through issues that we do and try to make some improvements. But this is something that's been in the works for a while. As Dennis said, the town is going to take the, the step of going through and designing. This is the town pipe, it's not the railroad's own pipe. It just runs through our property. And what we have agreed to is that through our transloading contractor, Railworks, and they have hired earthworks to come in and actually through all of us combined, it's going to come in and replace the pipe. So what this is, is the pipe is actually across the railroad tracks on Depot Street, I think, where the last manholes. Then it has to, we have to sleeve underneath the railroad tracks, the main line. From there, we then need to connect to the sewer facility. And all that's several, many feet down in the ground. And then with that, every so many feet, there needs to be the proper manholes to get in there, do the inspection, repair or something like that. So and that's just what we're doing now. The best solution is just to come back and replace all of them. So I, I believe what Chris is going to say is that we're going to leave the pipe in operation as it is, and then we're going to build a new parallel pipe next to it. Once that pipe is built, then we'll reconnect both ends and it'll flow right through. So there won't be much destruction in the search. Now tied into that, we had always said too, is that we would come back and, and the town would still maintain the pipe stability. It's not going to be used. We're planning to abandon the new place. But we would give an updated, revised easement for wherever the new pipe is located with the appropriate utility easements to come back in there should there need to be a repair, come back and repair and you can you know, move some rail tracks around to make whatever happen. But having said that, Chris is going to build this as the last 200 years because
That's the way to do it.
So I got the rip off that.
Yeah, that's great.
We are, right now, there is a multi-year delay in steel pipe. And so what we're working with the engineers is there is an alternative heavy gauge plastic in some PSI, you're going to tell me, that, that is the equivalent of that. It is only eight weeks out. So I think that's the direction we're going to go with this. It, it has the same lifespan, works just as well. And you can call the details that I didn't talk about.
So due to availability, we're looking to use C900 plastic pipe, which is generally used for water pipes. It's got a 250 PSI rating, so should eliminate a lot of the intrusion of water into this sewer pipe, which has solved a lot of Dennis's problems at the plant. We're going with that because of the depth. We're trying to play it safe and make sure that you guys don't have to fix something anywhere in the near future. Construction time, eight, eight to 10 weeks to put this in. I guess that's about what I got. We're looking to start in February, hopefully in February. And we want to try to get the majority of this done before, you know, major melt. So we don't have to deal with excess water in the area. And, and again, this is going to solve the town's the INI issue. But again, this is, this is something we've talked about for years. We've been working through it. Costs go up a little. Probably agree to do, but we're going to stall out of revenue and come back and then we'll do this the right thing to do. And it's been a pleasure working with the town. Everybody's very professional. And we try to be back and think there's just a great professional relationship with all the parties and we want to continue.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
So as an understanding as to what exactly the, the Grafton Upton Railroad is prepared to do, I think it's important for the board and all the folks at home to understand that a project of this size, if we were to put it out to bid, is approximately $910,000. So the engineering aside, and the ASBILs and oversight aside, that is the cost savings to the town of the Upton Railroad putting this interceptor in.
And that will be to the rate payers for the water sewer?
Correct.
I'm not going to say it's going to cost us $900,000 because we don't have to pay for vacant wage and Chris is very efficient. What he's going to do, but it's still going to cost us many, many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars to do it. So again, we're able to do something a little bit more efficient and cheaper than the linear procurement process you would normally go to. But you're going to get a product that you're designing and we're just building for you. And so in essence, this will be a donation to the town for the pipe. So I think at some point, the board, if you're in agreement with this, we hope, it has not only approved the contract that Dennis has brought to your attention, but then also accept a donation from us with the appropriate authorization for the easements to put in there. And again, it's just going to be standard utility easements. There's nothing special about what we're doing. I think the only thing that'll be different in this is we'll just need notice, you know, unless there's an emergency, just because we don't lose that rent. But other than that, it adds to your economics. It's the property anyway. So it's, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, it's great. Questions?
Uh, yeah, just kind of want to dive in a little bit deeper on some of the technical jargon that we're talking about. You said 250 PSI pipe. Is that right? Okay. And what would be the diameter of that pipe? I mean, if we're looking, obviously, the old pipe is the 15-inch vitrified clay, I believe it is. So what would the new pipe be as far as a 16?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that. So again, we are, we are in the process of authorizing a contract to engineer this. So there is engineering that needs to be done. I suspect that the engineering is going to reveal that we need a 15-inch pipe for a 15-inch pipe. However, the engineering could reveal that we want an 18-inch pipe for future expansion. Or if then we feel that we're underutilized, we could get away with a 13-inch pipe or 12-inch pipe. But that needs to be discovered through the engineering process. It will be done appropriately based on what the engineers decide will be the max that could ever go through that interceptor.
The reason I ask that, Dennis, is there's always been talk, right, about different projects and as projects maybe go north on 140, that line may end up carrying extra water, sewer, whatever we're, we're talking about.
Absolutely.
From, you know, the northern side of 140, or Mechanics Street, you know, that particular area. So I was just wondering if looking forward, would we be thinking that we need a bigger pipe than the 15? I could never see it going any smaller. I mean, I can't see how an engineer would come up with that. I'm just thinking as, you know, looking forward, would we be, you know, again, a 16 inches, 15? Was that over-engineered 40 years ago when that pipe went in or 50 years ago? Or was that, you know, looking forward to building up the town?
No, it's flawed now.
And then I guess my other question was, what is the total length of the excavation? So again, you were saying you're going to sleeve underneath the tracks. So what is the total length of that trench?
Oh, between 850 and 900 feet.
People ask me these questions. I'd just like to make sure I have all the answers.
Three football fields.
All right, 850.
And it's deep. Lori?
Had a lot of discussion.
The current pulvert that's there, that looks like a little stream with the green, that's all going to be covered up with the new design, right? Does that have to go through DEP or anything like that, Dennis?
So that's being coordinated with the on-call engineers. And, and, and we do keep DEP, we've had it on-site to read everything.
Because I remember we had technical issues.
For federal regulation.
Yeah.
But as you all know, we invite DEP down and walk through everything. Invite town people down there to go through utility, conservation and everything. If you just make sure that do what needs to be done.
Yeah.
We're speeding that as well.
Yeah.
But that's, that's separate than this particular.
Right. And then the other question is, once there are, you do the next phase or the final phase of expansion, there will be some rail lines that are sort of stubbed off that will sit over this line? And that was what you said, if, if those need to be moved for whatever reason in the future, in 200 years, that that's something that you guys would take care of at your expense.
I mean, I've got a drone at that time, I wasn't throwing around, but.
It'll probably be a whole different ballgame then, but.
You know, and how it's going to be designed is where the pipe is going to be is that you'll be able to unbolt the section of track.
Yeah.
Those are going to be stub tracks. So you'd have to move those five. They're not mainline tracks. You have to get the five cars that might be parked at the side. Move them out.
Yeah.
Unbolt the track and then go down and then, and then just re-bolt it back. It's a Lego set at that particular point. And because it's not a mainline at that point, so we're sleeving underneath the mainline, it's, it's, it's straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. Yeah. Great. Okay. Yeah, that's good. Good.
And you have a side to make your tracks.
Yeah. And does that get written into the easements or something like that, just from a technical perspective?
Uh, we then incorporate something like that in there. I mean, again, I was looking at destroying utility and stuff. So if we need to move something, that's just a coordination and we would do that. No problem.
Yeah.
You know what? As we've talked and look at the old agreements that are written, it's, I like things just to be clear and in language terms.
Exactly.
So we all know what it's going to be. And, you know, if there's, if there's something that's blown, that's right. Use best efforts to get that done and, you know.
Yeah. Likely not be any of us that are involved, which is why writing it down clearly will help us all. Or help.
We've run into this. Other aspects of government. We see things that were agreed to 20 years ago and you either can't find it or it's unclear what the agreement is. So we want to make sure that we get that square.
Yeah.
We've been here since 1883. So I see all those agreements all the time.
I was going to say, you've probably worked through a lot more than we've seen. Good. Okay. If there are, and the, the cost right now, we're approving this, just over $52,000 is for the engineering design assessment analysis. Is that right?
Correct, sir. That is for, we're going to do an onsite complete analysis of what is there now, which they have already begun doing because we had to do some preliminary investigations. And then we are going to design it completely so that everything that the Grafton Upton Railroad installs is per the specifications of the town of Upton's. And then we are going to have recordable documents, including an easement that is up to date, that can be withheld and up in perpetuity and recorded.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Just one last question for you, Dennis. And you're comfortable with the, you're comfortable with the, the idea of the plastic pipe as opposed to the steel pipe?
So we're talking about the plastic pipe, Steve, and that's a great question. And the, the engineers are considering all of the, all of the alternatives that are out there today. So I, it would not behoove me to say that this was definitely going to be that exact pipe. It is going to be the pipe that the engineers stamp and provide certainty that this is the correct pipe for it to be. And it meets all of the requirements that we require for this pipe to last the timeline that we are expecting. So right now, that is the pipe that we are thinking and that's why it's the pipe we are discussing. But the engineer's report will define that.
Very good.
And I could just, I don't know if this is Dennis or Joe. Dennis, do you use KMP for doing the utility easements?
Use KMP?
Yeah. That's fine. So, yeah, because I mean, they have the standard language for this.
Yeah.
Great. More questions anymore?
That's it. Great. Awesome.
There are no other questions. Take a motion or you can have a discussion, whatever. Pleasure, my fellow.
Ready for a motion?
Great, me too.
Okay.
That's fine.
I move to the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the town manager to prepare and execute a contract with Wright Pierce for Design and Construction Administration Services for sewer improvements at the Grafton and Upton Railroad Rail Yard per the letter dated November 30th, 2022 in the amount of $52,200 and to authorize the expenditure of ARPA funds for the Design and Construction Administration Services.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries by unanimous action. Thank you for all your work on this, Dennis, and thank you for the work over the past few years and getting this done. It's great to have you here in town. So we appreciate it.
Offer, and I know on your shoulders, I'll be providing four for this one. We'd love to do that again, maybe in the spring. And then show you some of the upgrades to do there. I think since you've lasted there, obviously the building has been built, the state of the art. And then we've also extended, with Dennis's help, the water main off of Maple Street. So that actually provides a backup service to Depot Street. Showing that older line have, continue to have issues as that you, we, you know, through our improvements, it's actually helping the town as well for that too. So again, in the spring, we can coordinate something and be joined.
Love to see it operating.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Definitely take you up on that.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be holidays.
Take care.
Thanks, Dennis. See you later.
Next up on the agenda, we have the Earth Day Cleanup Committee. I'm Lynn Aggerde.
Good evening, through the Chair. Thank you for having me. So I'm here to, to ask the Board formally for a committee. There's never been an Earth Day Committee. I have received assistance. I've been doing this for the last five years. It started with, well, probably more, longer than that, maybe seven years. Blackstone Heritage Corridor originally organized this and they would supply us with, you know, pickers and gloves and this and that. And our DPW was always supplied bags, which I'm very, you know, grateful for. But they needed a volunteer to organize all this. And I've been doing it for a number of years and other groups, conservation, other committees throughout the town assist me. They've joined, you know, not only in volunteering, but helping me promote the event on their, you know, website and whatnot. And when Blackstone Heritage Corridor had no longer, it had a bandwidth to do this, you still wanted volunteers and all, look, the towns around did this. And I still continue to do it with the help of the Police Department, the DPW, the library, to get the bags out, asking for assistance from, from all of you. Last year, I came to you and I said, hey, can I, you know, can I have a bunch of clothes? And also some CPAP is to educate. So I'm here. I, I'm here tonight. I've been doing it myself, but I've been joined with Menden. Menden reached out to me. If I had a committee, I, I could do a better job. And I kind of need, I'm one man damned. I mean, I need some help. And, you know, we, a week-long event will pick up a lot of trash and I really appreciate everybody's help and through the, it's pretty much a populated website. I use the Sign of Genius. And I think all of you have, each and every member of the Select Ward has been with me on an Earth Day, which I really appreciate. Um, the sign of Genius has everything pretty much uploaded, all the streets in town and all of that, but it could be even better if I had a committee to, with assistance, um, moving forward. And so our Town Manager gave me an outline to follow, and I was, I tried to follow as best I could, but. And so I had, um, gone through the, received the, the letter that I submitted, um, and it called for, you know, add the selectmen appoint a committee. I'm asking for five members. And as I was following through, I thought that you needed a member from each different committee, as you will. Now, conservation, land stewardship, they all do help me, but they've never taken on the committee, because they have a lot of, um, and they, different members have expressed this to me. They, they have projects, other projects also, so they haven't taken this on. Um, so I don't know how, how it should all be, you know, written out, so to speak, or how it should be documented, but I am, um, I hope you will award me a, a committee of some kind, so I can, we can do a better job with all of this.
So, um, just to add in some additional, uh, information, I did talk with, with Lynn, and she also had gone in front of the Board Health for support, and the Board of Health had written the following, which I'm just going to read into the record. Please be advised that during the meeting held on December nineteenth, the Board of Health met with Lynn Hagerty to discuss the Earth Upton Earth Day Committee, which Lynn has devoted much of her time to. In order to provide more support to Lynn and the committee for future events, the Board voted to approve the Earth Day Committee falling under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. Should you require any further information, please feel free to contact us. Um, uh, I let the Board of Health know, like, I'd like just to touch base with them, to sort of find out what that really means. Um, Lynn is part of a request, asks for a budget, you know, for some of the committees that are standalone, you know, you'll see just a standalone, like five hundred, seven hundred fifty dollars, you know, budget item. Uh, I asked some questions, what, how Board Health sort of viewed that relationship, um, and because we have a little bit of time before Earth Day, um, but maybe we could, uh, I could work with Lynn and just communicate with Board Health, just to make sure, fully understand, like, how this committee is being set up, is that, when I read their, um, uh, what they wrote, I was like, well, did they view it as subcommittee of the Board Health, and they're creating this under them? When I asked for clarification, they said oversight. That caused me to be a little bit more confused as far as how the role and relationship. It absolutely is needed. Uh, Lynn needs additional assistance. I think everyone's in agreement. Just, uh, like, what is the structure? Where should it be? Where should it live? I just want to make sure that, um, anything that the Board votes, that because Board Health also took some form of action, I just want to make sure everything is reconciled, so we don't have some sort of confusion to when you try to get appointments on there. Um, and just make sure that everyone is, uh, with that goal of, of cleaning up for Earth Day, that we're just marching together rather than sort of not being on the same page. And then just report back to the Board at the next meeting, first meeting in January, which we'll be, we'll find out, because that just came in yesterday, really didn't have time to reconcile things before the meeting.
Questions, feedback?
We have suggestions, we came to wait and vote on our.
At the January tenth meeting.
Meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very valuable. It's just, I have some questions as far as how they view it. If it's just assisting, like, like they have been, you know, we're, we all want to provide assistance. It's just, they use some terms that just made me just want to say, okay, hold on, let's make sure we're all on the same page, how this is set up. And we can, we can do it next meeting.
Questions?
Yes, so comment, yeah, comments and questions.
Anything you want.
I always got one of these, at least.
Anything you want.
Well, I guess I'll start with a couple of comments. Uh, it's, it's obviously a great event. I think I missed one year out of the last five, I, I think, uh, but it's, you know, as you've mentioned, as times moved along, I think it's tougher to pull it together without the support of Blackstone Valley uh, Heritage Corridor helping out. Um, I'm not a fan of forming more and more committees. I've kind of said it in the past. It's just, I feel that we're, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of committees, and it's hard to fill seats. People want to serve on a committee, people put forward applications, but the absenteeism is there as well, so I think it's difficult sometimes, um, you, when you have that narrow of a scope. I mean, it would appear to me that this would fit nicely under land stewardship, but you had mentioned that you spoke with them, and they weren't interested in taking on this project?
Hey. In general, land stewardship, if you look at the membership, it's similar to the membership for conservation, Green Committee, for all, I play, being on another committee myself, where it there's a lot of us that we are, are a lot of volunteers that we have same, different hats, same people. And to ask to pull from that same, it, you know, you're putting on more of the volunteers that we already, that we already have to, to assign another, another task, another, and, um, like I was saying, when I made the, wrote out the, um, the write-up and the letter, and it would really be better if we, more of the community at large, and, um, you know, this is only for a couple of months. It's, if I got to launch in January, you know, Earth Day is in, in eight, on April twenty-second. However, the stuff we do beforehand, as you know, set up in the library in different locations to pick up bags and start advertising with Menden, all of that uploading information.
Okay, and the only other comment I was going to make, um, you know, the funding source, all things considered, is such a, such a small ask, and we have significant money in our beautification fund. So I don't, as you alluded to earlier, Joe, I don't think it necessarily makes sense to build a, a line item in the budget for Earth Day. I mean, I can't imagine a Board of Selectmen, current or future, would have a problem authorizing somewhere south of six hundred dollars for earth cleanup within the town, so, uh, again, that shouldn't make any difference either way, as, as far as what you're thinking. As far as the committee goes, the funding source doesn't much matter.
As long as you provide the funding, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I, I don't, I'd like, it would only make sense to use that beautification money to fund something like this.
Right.
Um, you know, we have to look at it and see if we do form a committee.
Right.
Like how that, if there's any implications to the beautification fund, but either way, it needs to get funded. So if there's some technical reason that we can't use beautification money, because the Board Health or the Board of Selectmen form a committee, and then it becomes something official for the town, and can't use the beautification fund for that reason, then we would need to create a line item to fund it, but short of any reason otherwise, we would definitely use the beautification fund to fund this, regardless of whether there's a committee or not a committee, I totally agree. Um, the only other, you know, things I would add are, um, you know, I think it's a great opportunity to create a group of people. Clearly, you need the support, you and a couple of others have been doing this yourselves for many, many years, which is a great gift of time to the town, um, and energy, and I, I wish, you know, the, the number of bags you've collected would more than fill this room. Um, so it's really something that's very generous, and it's a really visible, you know, thing that you can see the impact of. Um, my kids have participated, we've participated as a family, it's a great opportunity, it's a great community event. Um, so anything we can do to support it, I'm a big fan of. And, you know, whether it's the Board of Health or the Board of Selectmen, I don't have a horse in that race, doesn't matter to me. I think as long as the people that are doing all the work, get the help they need, that's fine. If the Board of Health wants there to appoint the members and run it and call it a Board of Health subcommittee or whatever they want to do, totally fine. If they want us to do it, totally fine. Um, the one thing I would say is, the suggested membership is just recommends, just are the charge that, as it's written, just recommends one citizen at large, and then a representative from the Board of Health, Green Committee, Conservation Committee, and Land Stewardship. Um, I think that's overly restrictive. I think it would be better to maybe say, like, and again, maybe this is something you can talk to the Board of Health about, or these different committees about, if someone wants to participate or have sort of a designated seat on an Earth Day Committee, if that's the direction that, that somebody goes, but I would think we'd want more flexibility than that. You know, the Green Committee, for example, has a very specific charge that isn't really related to Earth Day or cleanup. Despite its name, you'd think it would be, but it's got a very specific charge around solar and electricity and fuel efficiency and those kinds of programs. Um, so I'm not sure it makes sense for them to participate, conservation and land stewardship. There's a lot of overlap there. I think any committee would need to consult with those folks, because I think those are folks that you'd go to and say, hey, are there particular areas that you want to target? Because you're out there in all this open space, are there places by Kewanas that aren't a roadside that you might want to go to? So I think that's important, but I don't know that we'd want to sort of constrain the membership of this committee, because I can see a lot of interest in a committee like this, um, across the town. So I don't think we'll have any problem getting at-large members for, for a committee like this.
Thank you, because I wanted to amend that, didn't know how to quite do it. I just wanted to keep going out to the Board's town manager.
Yeah, so that's the only thing I, I would say. I mean, frankly, even if it was five at-large members, or, you know, like, you can, you could, right, because all those other boards already are staffed with volunteer people, so they're already volunteering, so now you're asking them to volunteer on top of volunteering, and sometimes what happens is you get a lot less attention, right? Versus if you got an at-large member, that the only thing they're doing is the Earth Day Committee, they're invested in that. They're going to put all their energy into that one thing, um, which I think would be a lot more of what you need than um, sort of a figurehead position from any other committee. So anyway, that's all, that's all I would say. So I understand what you're saying. Do you have a preference, that one way or the other, uh, whether it falls under the?
No, I, I kind of, um, so with the recommendation of elected officials, they thought it would be, I was recommended to me that this would be good to fall underneath the Board of Health, and I was kind of thinking of it as, the Board of Health has, um, when they are here, um, oh, it's the, the big cleanup, um, you know.
Mosquitoes and tires.
No, no, that's wasted, yeah, that's wasted, that's wasted. You know, the, uh, the grant that they have, you get so many points for the hazardous waste, you get so many points for this. I was thinking that would early in the next cleanup, we're tying into that, so that's where it would be relative, and if they, if a committee was under them, and then the point system went to the grant, that's where my mind was at. Um, and I don't know how it all works.
Yeah.
I'm confused, so.
So that may be valuable. I mean, do you, Steve or Maureen feel strongly, one way or the other, whether it's sort of appointed by the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Health? I know that I expressed that I don't, but I think that might be relevant for Joe.
I don't either. I do think it's some, it should be under the Board of Health.
And you, you don't want to commit, you are, you're, you don't want to create another committee if we don't need to.
I, well, I guess at this point in time, I would only say, I didn't know if the Board of Health had the ability to form their committee, or if all committees have to be formed by the B O S.
Oh, okay.
So the B O S, I would suggest.
Yeah.
We can just simply form the committee, appoint whomever the members are that would like to, and just make them a designate to the Board of Health.
Yeah.
As Lynn had described, I think that makes great sense, if they can get some credits. Because I, you know, we're attached to some emails, and you'll always see some things are out there, uh, carbon points and different things that the B O H is trying to achieve.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think this is something that would count towards, you know, towards their overall goal, so I think that makes more sense.
Okay. Does that help? Do you have any other questions for us?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's why, once I got, I just wanted to make sure, okay. Make sure we all understand. The, the main thing is Lynn needs assistance. This is a great topic. We just want to do it as efficiently as possible.
There you go.
Thank you.
Actually, I know you were.
Thank you.
We'd be overwhelmed last year, so, uh, we'll try to get this going as quick as we can to give you ample time to get, you know, get the plans done.
Give the volunteers, and I thank you for your time, Mr. Lynn.
Yeah. My good time, thank you. All right, next up, we have the discussion around a donation of land to the town of Upton. And I think we got an email about this.
Um, I didn't send out the email you had, because I wasn't quite sure as far as, um, how sensitive the information was. Um, I can share, um, uh, G I S map on the screen to indicate what it is.
Let's do that. And I can give a little context and background. So the Board, uh, received an email from a potential land donor, I think in September, October. Um, and so he then contacted me directly and. It should be offset. Very good. Um, and so he and I have been going back and forth. His name is John Pollack. He owns land that's, I think, is zero West River Street, so it's on West River Street. Um, and it is, so let's orient people. So on the left is West River Street. So can you just do that with your little arrow? So see the road on the left, that's West River Street. The road on the right is South Street, and that's Sadler Road, and then you've got West River on the left by West River Street, you've got Center Brook by South Street. There's three large parcels. The one on the, that we're talking about is. Yeah. So that's, Joe's working on highlighting, there it is, yeah. Is that parcel there? There is, and so off to the left, you see the State Forest, which is the, all the green area is State Forest, and then those two other large parcels are both empty parcels. And there is a walking easement that goes from the other, if you, uh, well, it comes down west, comes in off of West River Street, goes down along West River, and through the left side, and then on the right, down West River, and then on the right side, there's also a walking easement on Center Brook that goes down, and I, I believe it connects with that parcel. Um, but anyway, that's the, that's the land, and I think the discussion today was around having it appraised or assessed for the value of the donation. So, and, and just so it's clear, this property doesn't abut my property, but my property is in the top left of where this was, that's right. So that's the end of Barbara's path, and that's my property there. Just in, in full transparency, so we need to talk to. Yeah, yeah, and then the south side, which is there, is Maureen's property, so.
Which one?
We're Maureen, our neighbors, uh, that long one just south, the really long one that goes across.
Okay. It looks like there's two of them, or the jog in the middle?
Yeah, that's, that's the one there. And then the one above that is owned by the local resident, Bob Genoa, who lives across the street.
Right.
And so in theory, Genoa, he is eighty-six years old. He owns that flag-shaped piece that abuts the conservation land just to the left, and he owns that very large, yeah, so he owns that parcel, and the one, and that parcel. So in theory, and I, I walked the land with, um, uh, Mike Panko from, uh, the Land Stewardship Committee, he's also on the Metacomic Land Trust, in terms of the value to the town, and so what he liked was that you could potentially, depending upon what you'd ever do with Genoa's property, if you could string all of those parcels together, that's like a hundred acres of land that could expand the State Forest. So obviously, this is sort of like a, of one parcel donation, that's like, okay, it's landlocked, you can't, you know, do much with it, but if you can piece it together with those other lots, it becomes very significant in terms of having a contiguous piece of open space for conservation reasons.
Um, me personally, I'm going to need a little time to digest that, just to kind of understand it all.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then my personal feeling right here from a lot of people in town is, we have, you know, I'm going to use the slang that it here in town is, we've really been on a bender lately, as far as, you know, the ridiculous acquisition of, like.
Yeah.
Again, this is.
Yeah.
Coming from, I'm not saying I disagree with the point either.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you look back. Uh, but if you look back and do a quick look back in the last couple of years. It's been three consecutive years, right? Ninety four acres up on Mechanic Street. Right before that, it was another, you know, those three combined parcels up on Horn Hill, the Kelly property that was probably another, I want to say around fifty acres. Up there.
Yeah.
And then, of course, the year before that, three consecutive years, the Robertson property.
Yeah.
Which was another, you know, I think it was forty seven odd acres.
Yeah.
So we've really been so and again, as we keep acquiring land, we're taking it off the tax roll.
I was I was gonna say, that's a key thing to write like. This would be a donation of, I think it's twenty five acres. That to your point, right? Like two things. One, it's landlocked, so it can never be developed anyway. So it's not like we're adding to the conservation. But it would be a donation, so it wouldn't cost the town anything other than the taxes we receive on it now. Right? Because he does have to pay property tax on it, whether it's developable or not. I think it's assessed. You just looked. Is it like one forty six or one fifty?
Fifty seven.
Okay, so one fifty seven. I don't know if he's got a chapter sixty one or anything like that on it. So we shouldn't we should ask the assessor, but even if even if it was full value, I don't know what is that? In terms of tax revenue.
Oh, yeah, that would be tax cover dollars. I mean, times that trades. Heavy if we were if we're also assessing it as a build slot and that's. That's a little unknown. If you just took the assessed value in like thirteen.
What's the tax rate?
Uh, thirteen eighty six.
So it's twenty one hundred dollars of tax revenue that we'd be giving up each year um if we accepted the donation. So that's sort of all the math that's. And I I agree with you. I hear the same things, right? And I would initially, he was like considering like, oh, will you buy the buy the property? And. That's like, that's when I started talking to Panko and the Land Trust to say, would you guys be interested in this? Because there's I. I wasn't speaking for the board, but I said I would support paying for it. Um, and I don't know about my colleagues. And so we went back and forth and he finally, you know, his family's got a long history in the town. It was his aunt's property. Um, he purchased it from her. Barbara Allen was the the original owner. She's a Barbara of Barbara's path. I think his uncle or his great uncle was on the select was a board on the Board of Selectmen back in the day. So he sort of. Wants to make a contribution to the town as part of his family legacy uh for the community. And. So I think that was the conversation and I it got to a point where, once he was willing to entertain donating it, and he still isn't a hundred percent committed, but he said. If you guys can get the appraisal, once the if you pay for the appraisal, once the appraisal comes back, he'll know essentially what his tax deduction would be. So he would make a decision about donating at that point, but he's very open to it. He wouldn't have entertained these conversations. Um, and once he said he would be willing to donate it, I was like, okay, let's see what the board thinks. So.
Appraisal will be short of money and we're looking three to four thousand. We have within the town managers budget, we have um. Uh, engineering consultant line item that is tended for these types of really small, you know, like you need to make decisions and that's what it's so. Um, I I can easily find out from the assessors for a follow up meeting as far as. Uh, what the true value is because hundred for twenty five acres, a hundred and fifty seven thousand is not much. Um, whether or not he has it registered uh in any other um land program, I couldn't see on this, but the assessors would have that. I would I would be inclined someone would have it involved. Um, uh, because even for for landlocked piece paying two thousand dollars a year for property tax. Um, you'd think that you'd try and find ways to reduce that if that burn.
Yeah.
And if the board did then decide to um accept a donation, uh, we would have to do that at a downtown meeting and we would need to. Get that even as.
So think about it, research it, no rush. He's not in a particular rush. I mean, he wants to sort of close it out because I think he's aging and. Trying to clean up his portfolio for his family, his children, so they don't have to deal with it. Um, but again, he's, you know, he understands the situation. So. No pressure.
Yeah, I mean, as I look at it, the only other, you know, thinking long term planning, the only other thing I would suggest is. It has, you know, sitting landlocked, right? It has very minimal interest to hardly any people other than if you order it, right? But if you look at the land to the left, which is Robert Genoa's land. Um, you know, is there an opportunity for those two parcels, you know? Builder was going on our developer was going to buy those two parcels, we can put in a small called a hack and building. Whatever it be eight houses or six houses or something like that. So.
There there is not. So that what that's obviously. So I what I would tell you is if that was possible. He wouldn't be talking to us about donating his land.
So it's rough land.
He's he's talked to Mark Donato owns the large lot above it. Rob Robert Bob Genoa owns the land to the left of it. He approached both of them and obviously, right, they'd be the ones that would say, oh, I'm trying to put this little puzzle together. So I can do the development. Donato is a land developer, so he would definitely have bought it cash.
Yeah.
And uh, Genoa, you know, he's sort of an old timer local, so I'm not sure. He probably would have just said, yeah, I don't want to deal with this. Um, but either way, he wasn't able to sell it to either one of those parties because they know that you can't get across West River or Center Brook. Because there's like a two hundred foot wide. Actually, I think it's like six hundred feet. Uh, Army Corps of Engineers access easement. So if you have, you know, do you have that email handy by any chance?
Yeah. Is that uh on both sides of the road or how does that?
You'll see. He he included that. So it really is truly not developable land.
Well, they're also in the flood plain.
Yeah, I know it's very wet along there, so I'm not sure exactly where that boundary is.
But you'll you'll see the Army Corps. When you look at the Army Corps drawing, it'll be like, yeah. So what you could do in theory is if you bought. I mean, you can't. There well. It's much easier. You've got a picture of where the house is.
I mean, we can certainly pick it up at the next discussion. I can I can do some homework or Joe, if you have Army Corps of Engineer maps, you could just email it to me and I'd take it. I mean, I don't want to put you under pressure.
There we go.
Got a little. Little time to digest this. Now, which waterway is Center Brook?
It's the one to the right. So West River is on Center West River.
That way center is right here. Through you saying.
That's just a drum. But anyway, fifth. So see that yellow is where there is the Army Corps easement. Basically a floodplain. And so you can't build in it. You can't put a bridge in it. You can't go across it. You can't put a shed on it. You can't do anything with it. So there's no. So that that's that's part of the consideration because you're right, like if it could have been developed, obviously putting twenty houses in there that are worth a million dollars each. That's more revenue for the town than to that.
Right. That's your long term opportunity cost. Just trying to figure out what would be the long term.
That's right.
Opportunity cost. We keep gobbling up these pieces.
That's right.
You know, we're going to end up uh.
Yep.
That's a fifty foot easement on either side of the river, correct?
Oh, it's way more than that.
No, it isn't. It's in my.
Well, you're you're talking about a walking the walking easement.
Just an easement on both sides of the.
Right.
Right, it's right.
But that's that's different than that. That's different than the Army Corps easement, which is the two hundred and sixty nine.
This is an Army Corps easement. It says it on the deed.
We'll look at it. Show you.
That when you said that two sixty nine, that's an elevation easement?
Yeah.
Okay. So a very.
Floodplain easement.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll we'll look. We'll look more closely. So we can. We can look at it next time and see what's your point. So we'll digest that and that. That's sort of this is the first time we're looking at it. So. Yeah, I think we wanted to introduce it and just get a.
Floodplain is on FEMA, right?
Army Corps of Engineers. I don't know what.
Joe, um, I mean, floodplain is is administered through uh through FEMA, but um. In this case, the Army Corps does have. For whatever reason beyond, say, other um river systems, there there is a Army Corps easement that comes down west and center. Um, because I I know about it on the Northbrook side where it significantly impacts um what can happen. And you know, whether it's it's connected to like the dam, because this is all upstream. Probably is why it's like not on the Blackstone or something like that, this type of.
Any other questions on that one?
Uh, nope.
Yes, uh, on the agenda is the. Twenty twenty one or update of what we had done in twenty twenty one for priorities and looking at it to update it for twenty twenty three. Maybe do we want to?
Oh, um, I could go through and just sort of update how I knew um of recent stats because many of these have been works in progress.
Right.
Um, uh, and uh, some of it sort of need. All of your assistance to sort of fill in some of the blanks.
Yeah. So why don't we take a couple of minutes to just scan through this? Like if each of us just sort of reads through to refresh our memories of what's on here. Um, seal in and then we can sort of pick the ones we want to talk about. If they're not a hundred, if they're a hundred percent complete, we don't have to talk about them. If they're anything less than that, then. You know, we should focus on the ones that are priority uh that sort of interest you and raise those and we'll. Come to some consensus around what our top priorities are.
I'll just throw in an idea and then I'll get back to studying this document. But one thing is I perused this earlier.
Yeah.
Um, we saw where was it? Uh, Town Hall Use Policy. I think we're going to probably need to address the Library Use Policy. You know, now if you get the new building.
Yeah.
Um, community center, I shouldn't say council, you think there's probably some things there as far as, you know. E D M's just a myriad of of issues. I think we want to reset some boundaries so we don't just delegate everything to. Uh, C O A and library and say, rec. Or whoever else.
There you should be our E D C, right? When was that come?
You mean for the center town?
Right.
Uh, that's come and gone, expired, zero responses.
Just sent out?
We'll be talking about that in January.
Yeah.
With both the E D C um and get some perspective, but we've got to figure out what we're doing with pristine. That land. But that's it. So that that I think would be our number one priority is figuring that out on this list. Um, I know it says downtown redevelopment is a hundred percent done. But it's not. All right, we should put that to less than a hundred percent. And I think if we sap rank these, that would be helpful too, Joe. So maybe we could sort of take a stab at that.
Yeah.
Not not necessarily for today. Today, I think we'll just call up the ones that are really important. Um, so I.
Yeah, and and that's where it's it's like, you know, absolutely having some sort of ranking.
Exactly.
You know, like some high, medium, low, at least uh.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, we'll buy this.
Anything jump out at you is important to you?
Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, the community center, you know, drives some boundaries on that building, some policies that we probably need to implement there.
Yeah.
Um, we have, of course, um make mention in this list of preserving holy angels.
Yeah.
We've got to mention here for a pristine distribution program for those in need. But I think that raises my attention to the pristine building. So I think we also need to have the pristine building.
Yeah.
Uh, to this and I'm in favor of preserving it myself, but.
Yeah.
That's the review of the board.
Yeah.
Um, the other item I would just share with my is some of the comments we get. Initial batch of survey returns when we did the housing production plan committee, we sent out a survey. I hope it returns to residents. But we there were some interesting questions in there. And one thing that, you know, I'm sure this isn't going to surprise you, but this one thing that did. Uh, pop up as we reviewed the answers, of course, is taxation and the tax bill. So it's on people's mind. Um, it's a deterrent for people that are trying to stay in town. Uh, just, you know, very, uh, it's all, you know, overwhelming for some people, of course, as they really age, but it's also an excuse for people. Uh, or necessity for people to leave town just because of taxes. So I think that's something that, you know, warrants a pretty good discussion. You don't really. Focus on what measures can we take if the board to try to alleviate taxation? You know, we almost talked about bringing more business into town, but. Unfortunately, we've been unsuccessful. Look at that.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, this this is the discussion, so we should definitely put that. At the very top of the list, uh, or at least towards the top, top, top five, I would say, to discuss because, you know, the the big thing. Like there's very limited levers we have to pull. And so I think the discussion really ends up becoming where do we want to make cuts? And uh, not and not we as a board, right? Where 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 do we think the town? What 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 recommend what recommendations or what alternatives could we bring to the voters to say? If you want to lower your taxes, then you'd have to cut these services, right? Because that's really what it's going to come down to is whether or. What are we? What are people willing to tap on? So I hear the same thing. There's folks that, you know, are are. Really struggling with the taxes. It's a deterrent for people to get into to come into town. Um. It's a makes it a challenge for people to stay in town. Certainly, that's why I think the senior relief uh for taxes has been something that we've been focusing on. As a board, I think we should continue to do that and and try to find ways to ease the burden for people that are on fixed or low incomes. Um, because it also, you know, the the benefits and all the services also is what drives up home valuations and people's. They, you know, increase in their asset, which is only only matters if you're going to sell your house, right? It doesn't help a person that's, you know, retired on a fixed income and doesn't want to move. It doesn't matter if the house is worth five million dollars. They could in theory take a mortgage on it, but whatever. Um, so so we have to balance that, right? There there's a balance. And I think the pendulum has sort of swung. Over the past five or ten years towards um, you know, increased services and better schools and better roads and all that.
Right, right. We talked about how it increases town value, uh, you know, household values. However, the issue always is. So can be said with all of our neighboring communities. You know, I made this statement before. I can't move east. Sure, my house is appreciated, whatever is appreciated, two hundred thousand bucks, just say.
Yeah.
But I can't move east.
Yeah.
I can't sell my house and buy anything similar to it and go to Hawketon or go to Holliston or Ashland and go anywhere east.
Right.
Right? So.
That sort of wave just keeps coming west.
That wave pushes.
Used to be inside of one twenty eight, then it was inside of four ninety five and no keep. Now it's in nothing.
Right, right. We see tremendous growth in Oxford. You know, I had some business that brought me over towards Oxford and it's, you know, amazing what is going on over there. How much how much both on the commercial side and residential side. So. You know, unfortunately, it's well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, it's just the way of economics, right? It's just pushing down.
Yeah.
But yet even the early comment Joe had, really, our budget is built on our projection for new growth. So here's the particular year where if a lot of these projects start slowing down, we know interest rates have exploded. Uh, if these projects slow down and the property stops selling, now our new growth numbers start to go. So our budget numbers, you know, are going to be off and building next year's budget is going to get kind of log cans, say.
Yeah.
So there's a lot to consider.
Yep, yep. What else? Holy Angels, Ristine, Taxes.
E D C.
Economic Development Committee.
They on here? I think they're down.
What about the Economic Development Committee? Are you just thinking economic development as a topic or?
As a topic, I don't know. Well, it's gone up twice and we have got nothing.
Oh, gotcha. So the the downtown redevelopment, yeah.
The project gets out.
And then the Holy Angels and the. Library of steam.
Yep. So we're going to say E D C slash R F P.
Yeah.
And that we have scheduled for January. I think we're going to have a larger discussion.
Yeah.
Also, uh, succession planning for new employees or employees.
Right, to try to avoid building the.
So we don't have everybody leaving at once, no plan in place.
On the screen, you just can't predict, right?
It's quite crazy, I, it's, I've never seen anything, I'm, I've only been here a few years, but.
No, we're not unique. No.
That's, that's, that's for sure.
And we're, when I retired, there were sixteen people that retired the same week.
You throw in the great resignation, you throw in, you throw in the great retirement, you throw in COVID, it makes it a lot, and this is what you have.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the younger generation's mindset is different, I don't think that they want to live in the same house their entire life and they don't want the same job their entire working career, so I think you're gonna see a lot more fluidity in, I'm gonna call it the younger generation.
Yep.
Gen Xers.
The Gen Xers, can you believe it, we're on the X. Actually, we're up to Z, there's Gen Zers now, so.
I don't know where we're going next.
The workplace has changed.
It's just.
Yeah, and, you know, we have to, we have to change with it.
Yeah. All right.
I think it's, I think it's already in the, I know it's already in the.
Change, the change.
To keep it at the top of our attention, the redesign of the website might be something that might be nice to have on here, just so that
Track it.
you see it, track it.
Yep.
And kind of can cross it off the list, right? Because I think that's pretty good, uh, a pretty good project that we want to accomplish.
Love it.
So I did start to list, um, now I'm writing notes, so as you say, priority, I'm just putting in high and stuff like that, so I can be down here while we meet. Um, I just started listing off some new ones below, one of the things you may see is, is best practices. One of the things that, um, next year is stick goals with department heads, I want to have them start to doc, document some of their standard operating procedures, processes, so that it gets to that succession planning, we don't have a book, we don't have a manual, when someone leaves on what are the best things that we should be doing, it's like we're starting from scratch. Um, you know, and many towns have developed these, uh, so that there's um, documented knowledge of, of what should be done. Um, not only as training, uh, but then also if you do have a, um, you can't always train the person leaving and the person coming again. Very often, there's a delay, and that, that really helps do it, but also it helps the departments think about their own internal processes. Um, many times, some departments just, they've always done it this way, they don't know why, and they don't know how it could be improved. So it gives an opportunity to sort of reevaluate what's being done.
What about evaluation, employee evaluations and goal setting every year, do we do that?
Yes, we do.
We haven't, but we do it.
Yes, yeah.
With all the employees?
So, we do it now. For, for department heads, um, yes. That's something that for department heads and then their staff, I mean, that's where a lot of the turnover process is at, so as we go in this coming year, work on those things, and that's where, you know, it falls on Sandy and I to reinforce them, because that's that's where, um, the merit increases, the step increases are tied to, and that's, you know, that's standard procedures across the town, that it, it facilitates that conversation, but also that evaluation process doesn't just happen in May and June, it's continual, it's six-month check-ins, it's a monthly check-in, make sure, you know, that, that you have that communication. So that is something that, um, with all the changes, we need to rebuild in, so that it just is, is part of our annual, um, you know, management processes.
And that's management, but do we set goals also to, by the employees during their evaluation?
Yes, yes, yeah.
You have a number of goals, like three or two?
It, it depends on the, you know, these managers, they have five story, um, hourly, non-exempt employee, there may be three or four, but everyone has a goal, uh, so, you know, it really depends on that. Because, uh, I think it was in two thousand, all my years are jumbled, um, that we put in the, uh, classification, uh, system was tied into a performance evaluation. So that's why we put in the state, when we put in the steps, it was tied into, uh, the performance phases.
And adding the merit.
Yes. Um, the steps are, um, two point four five. It's twelve step. And it's something, you know, we're gonna hopefully revisit this year as well.
Again, the master project meeting, is that going to be higher than that? Yeah, for, okay, and that's on the twenty-sixth, ten twenty-sixth?
What else?
Looks good to me, I think there's plenty on there.
Yeah, those are the ones that sort of jumped out for me as well. The only one oh, that I would add is the updating the master plan, because I think that ties to a bunch of grant writing work, and I know that we had done the master plan for RecCom, which was an input to the community town master plan. I think maybe the ADA assessment was, would go into the master plan, the housing production plan would go, so
Yeah.
we've been doing intentionally some of the pieces, which would be the inputs to a master plan, so, and also having a town planner was gonna be a big part of that, so now that we've got that.
Yeah.
Um, worked out, I think it might be a good time to at least have a discussion of where do we want to slot that
Right.
in terms of priorities.
When was the last one done? Two thousand and twelve?
Two thousand and five.
Five, I think it was, yeah, yeah.
Oh, the, the sidewalk, I think is a good one, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Right by the schools, because we've been talking about that sort of on and off, and maybe with ARCA stuff, sort of an opportunity now, if we can get someone else to pay for it.
Right.
That's a heck of a project to focus on.
You know, I think there's, you know, we talk so much about public safety, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're buying police cruisers and chief's cars all the time and big fire engines all the time, but we really should invest in that road. In my opinion, that's, that's liability.
Mm-hmm.
I see all around town, a lot of tree work being done, I think the state and, you know, the utility companies are getting smart as far as trying to get rid of some of this low-hanging brush, so they're not knocking out power all the time. But I'm getting to public safety, I think that sidewalk, me.
And that's, that was the sidewalk you were talking about on Maple, right?
Yeah. Um.
And they just started interrupting, but I'm on a creative whim here.
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
Just kind of build this out, uh, we could put the housing production plan
Yeah.
on here, just so that we can kind of check the box and again, track it.
Yeah. That'll be a good, a good start, first to look at it, then maybe next time we'll do the same thing and just sort of say, okay, yep, that's the right list, and refine the top
Yeah.
five or six.
And assign a percentage to it, like, would make, yeah, makes sense.
Good.
That's good.
Uh, last item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three schedule.
Here we go.
Okay.
Technically, there will be one small thing I, I want to bring up, this is the last thing. Uh, so you're, uh, just keep me in mind.
Okay, great.
Before meeting.
So twenty twenty-three, I don't know what, I mean, we have a standing schedule, so are you talking about particular dates or months?
Um.
Or days?
So basically, just, uh, setting the schedule, uh, which, which also does follow the first and, and third two states of the month, uh, basically taking us to June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, so the board had already voted for January to every March, I just wanted to round out the rest of the, the meeting calendar, uh, make sure that, uh, we had that, so I can make sure that we have it on the calendar. That, of course, because we're in the budget process and town meeting process, if we need additional meetings outside of that, we would schedule that as needed.
Any questions, concerns?
That's fine with me.
Good. Okay. Were there minutes?
I'll tell them with fifty seconds.
One second, yes, I did, so I can't talk. Uh, you know what?
Would you like to hold on the meeting minutes?
Uh.
The only suggestion I was gonna make on the meeting minutes, they look fine to me, uh, one of the art, uh, agenda items on there is setting up the, uh, single rate, tax rate, I thought it might be, uh, interesting to just include the actual tax rate. Now again, if it's thirteen dollars eighty-six cents, maybe we could include that in.
Yeah.
Did they announce it at the meeting? They didn't announce it?
No, I'm just trying to think of how that.
Yeah, I was writing it, I said, no, we didn't talk about, they don't.
You didn't know at that time, because I would have remembered if it was in the thirteens.
It wasn't announced at the meeting?
Yes, that's, that's.
Two dollars.
You picked up the three hundred million dollars in valuation.
How much?
It was three hundred million.
Three hundred and, yeah.
Yeah, it might have been a little over, actually.
It's thirty or sixty.
Yeah. And again, as we all know, and most people in the community that get their bills know, it doesn't mean a lower tax bill.
No.
So let's be clear about that.
Nope.
Um, so it's not providing the help that people are asking for, that a lot of people are asking for.
Right.
Um, but, uh, um, I'm just looking through these super quick, if you can give me one minute, I'll be done. Oh, I did, this just reminds me, I did go over to the playground at the community center.
Mm-hmm.
The sign is up, uh, for.
Okay. Maurice Capstone.
Maurice Capstone. Yeah, but it's already installed, like, on a stone
Oh, great.
pillar. Yeah, so that was good, I just stopped, just stopped.
Just riding through the, I didn't actually want playground, I should, I should take a walk down through there.
Yeah, yeah, I sort of scurried around with the kids and, and and stayed there, it's not inside the tape, but was able to see that, so I thought these look, this looks great, I'm, I'm good. So I'll take a motion?
I move that we accept the meeting minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous action.
So then, sort of the last thing is sort of like almost an emergency item, um, so, um, at your seat is, uh, like what Steve Capstone is up. Language that the town approved in the, um, two thousand twenty-one fall town meeting uh, for, uh, the special legislation on senior, um, tax exemption. Um, uh, legal counsel for, uh, the House had questioned language, and that's, that's the track changes version that you see. They had two other little minor edits, but one, they had questioned on a specific last sentence of section three. Um, I kicked it over to KP as well as our, um, board of legislators to ask their thoughts. Basically, they said, and you have an email from Valerie, um, where she says, I agree with Brian, town council, and would recommend the OS consider agreeing to delete the subject lines, um, as it may eliminate some confusion. So that highlighted section is what, um, uh, legal counsel for the House sort of questioned the necessity. Brian said, well, we can just remove it, um, it doesn't have any impact on um, what we're trying to do, and eliminates a point of confusion that, uh, the House Legal Counsel had. Uh, so one of the things is, is I, I talked to Taylor today, and she basically said, we're trying to finish up this legislative calendar before the end of the year. If we, and she wanted to know, is it okay just to delete this, and then we can say, okay, go and approve it? If the board wants, I mean, and the board can take more time to, to, to see if we want to delete this. What that would mean is that in January, they just would start the process over, it would still take a, a couple of months. Right here, they're on the one-yard line, um, with town council saying it's okay to remove, with Valerie, um, saying it's okay to remove, if you're okay saying it's okay to remove, I can let her know it's okay to remove, to try to get that approved this year. Um, meaning the next couple of days.
Is it, is it okay from a procedural perspective?
Yes.
Or to take a vote?
So, and I, so there'll be one thing that we have to, to do. Um, from the motion on town meeting, it gave the board the authorization to make amendments that were consistent with the purpose of, um, the special legislation.
Okay.
So this is consistent with what town meeting approved. Um, when, when boards do deal with an emergency situation, um, uh, yes, we could try to post a, uh, virtual meeting Friday morning, we may run the risk of not being able to make the legislative calendar. Um, uh, we are able to consider when we're less than twenty-four, when we're less than forty-eight hours, we can take action as long as at the next agenda, we put it on the agenda, and we summarize the action that was taken, that complies with the meeting law. So, reason why I'm raising this up is, one, we can vote to, um, approve the removal of that language, the, the edits that are on that draft. Um, I then would just, we basically would just summarize this on January tenth. That's what happens when you end up having like a urgent issue that has to have sovereignty, and is it absolutely urgent? It's not life and death, but, um, realistically, if they have to start over in January, if there's issues that would probably be a three-month process, so March, whether that has an impact on our ability to, that start to implement this, it could. That's sort of the unforeseen here. Since it is pretty straightforward, rather academic.
Okay, I think we're good, do you want to take a vote? Do you have a good plan with that?
I'm gonna ask you a question?
Questions, comments?
Questions, comments.
My pleasure.
Um, you know, it seems, it's kind of just defines that particular line, defines the process now. Over here, if KP Law, so it's Brian Riley from KP Law, is in he's, uh, he's in, uh, conjunction with it, that it's fine to believe it does not change the intent of the action.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, um, as long as we bring it up on the tenth and, you know, formally talk about it a little bit, that's fine with me, I don't want to okay, jam up the works.
Okay, so do we need a motion, or what do we?
A motion to, um, approve the changes, uh, to the special legislation, uh, as requested uh, by the, um, State's Council.
Okay.
Is your proposed motion on here? I don't see it, right?
No.
Okay. Shall I?
You got it.
So let me just, I got this.
I, I make a motion that we approve the proposed changes to the special legislation, uh, as recommended by the State's Council.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous action.
I was just gonna do that, I was trying to think of the right order. That's all right.
Uh, anything else?
Brett did.
Or will we adjourn?
Did you motion the change or just accepted for this, um, calendar meeting schedule? You didn't formally make the motion, right?
No.
Okay, just, that's fine, I didn't know if I slept through.
No.
You didn't say it. Okay.
Do we need to do that?
No.
It follows our, our.
Yes.
Headings, yeah. Okay.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, make a motion that we adjourn this evening for selection.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action, thank you.